Point.
Okay. This is, as a preliminary matter, this is Donald Davenport, Chair of the Hampden Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Mary Ellen Glover.
Present. Did you hear me?
John Flynn.
Present.
Yep. John Flynn.
President.
Robert Markle.
Present.
Pam Courtney. Good evening. This is an open meeting of the Hampden Board of Selectmen that's being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the agenda material of this meeting, allows public bodies to be entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded to the public and can follow up deliberation of the meeting. For this meeting, the Hampden Board of Selectmen is convening using Zoom video conferencing. Please note this meeting is being recorded. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance is to the flag.
And to the republic which it stands. Under God, indivisible.
Justice for all. I just, I just, I just have to say one comment. We had a lot of discussions about, you know, televising our meetings and how we would do that and everything, and guess what? Here we are.
Yeah.
We found a simple solution, I guess.
Yep.
The first, the first item on our agenda for this evening is request for a public health nurse.
You should have some information about that from Jane in the two-minute notes that I sent on today.
Lori is also on. Lori, do you want to talk about it?
Yeah, I just was, one of the things I was thinking about, just especially because we've been going through this whole pandemic, is the importance, I feel, that the town should have their own public health nurse. Currently, we work under the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, nurse that handles about seven, eight other towns in the Pioneer Valley, in Hampden County. And, you know, I think just going through this pandemic, I think we've learned, one of the things I feel like Jane and I are learning is that it would be good to have that in-house. Under normal cir-, and I don't, I'm looking, not looking to have a public health nurse take over for this pandemic. What I'm looking for is the board to address the possibility of getting a public health nurse that we'll have on staff regularly. What the public health nurse is normally responsible for is the Maven. So that is the, you know, infectious disease website. So when anybody comes up with an infectious disease, whether it be Lyme disease or whatever the case might be, the nurse does the follow-up with the physician and with the patient, and that gets all done on the electronic database in, from Massachusetts. And it's also what we're using currently for the COVID-19 outbreak. And I did speak with, Wolverhampton has a part-time public health nurse, and she, under normal circumstances, she works maybe, you know, three to five hours a week. And so that's probably what we would be essential to handle the Maven on non, you know, during time when we don't have a pandemic. So she, she forwarded me and I didn't get it. She was going to forward me the salary, but I think it came out to, say, like $30, $32 an hour, somewhere around there. And, and so, and also the job description. So when I get that, I should get that this week sometime, I can certainly email that to the board. So you'll actually have something to look at and decide if this is something that the town wants to do in the future for the public health benefit.
Excuse me, Lori. Excuse me. Can, can you move back a little bit from your microphone? We're getting an echo. Somehow, or for some reason, if you speak too close to your computer microphone, we get an echo.
Okay, all right. Any comments from the board, members of the board?
Yeah, Lori, would this take the place of the one that's paid for by the grant right now?
Yes.
Is it in the, okay.
Yes.
So would we, would we be able to get money from the grant to offset the cost?
I don't know. Lori, would we be able to take the grant money and offset the cost? No, because it's, I don't think, because it's split between three towns. It's not just us. We're recommending someone just for Hampden, not split. It's, it's really overwhelming on the Maven when something happens like this. I mean, just measles.
The three towns that apply for that grant, are we eligible to apply for the grant for just our town? Something to look into.
Lori? I don't know what happened. I can, I can ask Lori, and I think she's texting me now. And then I can, you know, we can talk about it next week if you want, or once we get more information. But I think it is, oh, she said she's, you muted her.
Sorry. I heard back, I heard background noise. I thought it was from, from there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, the grant is for eight towns. And, you know, the amount that you get for the eight towns is probably somewhere around, it's less than $5,000, maybe $4,000 a year. I mean, it gets minimal. And because she works full-time for the town of Ludlow. So she, you know, this is just something she does on the side. But, and she does, she does a good job, but, and, you know, she has always done a decent job. And I just felt that when it came to this pandemic, I, it was just, this is something we should think about for the future because it would be something that I think would be better to be handled by our town. And we can do a lot more with the contact tracing and various things to see how this, something like this affects the town of Hampden. We don't get that so much when that's happening somewhere else. So that's our thoughts.
All right. So, so you'll get us more information on that?
Yep, sure will.
Okay. The tip project?
We should pass that over. If you recall, last week, we discussed having them on the 18th. So I've scheduled it for the 18th. Did not take the, this item off the agenda, though.
Okay.
Could we, could we get more data on, on the accident rate and the type of accidents that are at that corner? So that we have some, something concrete in front of us?
Yes, when I saw the presentation, that was included. So I'll make sure that we have as much data as is available.
All right. Minute-taking software.
This was put on the agenda at the request of Mary Ellen.
As, as you all know, I've been concerned since I've been on the board about the accuracy and the timeliness of minutes. And I think minutes are very important to a functioning board into a successful board. And I do know of Otter, O-T-T-E-R, which is a voice conversion system, which takes notes from minutes, from meetings, and then transcribes them into a recording or a podcast or so forth. This is a free service. I think that Mr. Markle and perhaps John, since he knows so much about computers, would have to look into it a little bit further to be sure that it's the one we wanted if we want to go this route. But it's, you get 600 minutes of free transcription a month. If you want to, you can upgrade that plan and go to 6,000 minutes a month. But it would, that would be at a cost of $9.99 a month, I think it is. I've, I've been at meetings that have been transcribed using this, and they seem to have been very successful and easy and accurate. Because you hear everything that the people say, it's a whole transcription. Whether we want that amount of detail, or whether we want to have a different system, or whether we want to have some other system that will make our minutes more timely and more effective, is a, is a decision the board has to make, but I think that they can certainly be improved. And we just approved, we just approved February.
I had sent a link on that, Mary Ellen, to Bob over the weekend. I saw an article online about Otter.
Yeah.
So it seems to be, it seems to be, as you said, the choice for Zoom meetings.
Right.
Yeah, they have a partnership now with Zoom.
Yes, they do. They have a partnership with Zoom. And the other thing is that our last meetings that we approved were February 24th. That's a significant time lag to be almost made first. So unless we've approved other ones in the middle that I haven't kept track of as accurately as I should have, I just think that they, we can do a better job. And I think, I think a company that does that for free is a company we're interested in, we could be interested in.
Yeah, I think we've approved others. They're just not posted yet. I remember, I think we approved some March ones just last meeting. Don, correct?
Yeah, I believe the 9th, March.
I don't think we put them online yet, yeah.
Okay. But then they have to be, then, I don't know, I don't know if Otter puts them online. I mean, that would be good to know because that would be, that's another link that has to be completed in order for the public to know what's going on.
Mary Ellen, by, by transcription, do they, does it mean that they just record it, or does it print something out?
They put people's, they get people's names with who says what. I mean, you don't have to say your name. I mean, they, they identify you. You can, you can draw it up by, you know, everything that Don said at the meeting or anything that John said at the meeting can be drawn up individually, I guess I would say. It is, it's, it's pretty, it's really pretty, it seems sophisticated to me. But, you know, you people have more expertise in computers than I do. But it seemed like it was efficient and, and easy, you know, and.
As Mary Ellen said, since it knows which voice channel went with picture on the Zoom thing, it can pretty much put a name with each thing. Then you're, of course, then you're almost done. You remember back with the old Dragon voice recognition thing?
Right.
How good the software, and there will still be, you still have to massage it afterwards and try and correct the words based, you know, watching it. But as Mary Ellen said, at least you got the bones there, and then you can go back and at least get it in place.
I, the, I've been at two meetings with it, and neither one did they have to massage particularly. I mean, I thought they were pretty, pretty accurate. It does allow you also to, to take notes at the meetings. In addition, you know, you could, you could do side notes and that kind of stuff, I remember. But I think, I just think it's worth looking into because I think we can certainly improve in this area.
Yeah, okay. I like it.
I like the price.
The price is terrific. You know, I thought maybe we could try it at the next meeting and then see if we like it. You know, not to make a big commitment to it until, or a meeting coming up, doesn't have to be the next meeting, but a meeting coming up to see that Bob likes it and that it's easy to use and all that kind of stuff.
Well, Bob, I think you said the book club is using Zoom. Let's have them try it at their next meeting.
Okay. They are now meeting every Saturday at noon. So I set the meeting up for them, and off they go. So if you, if you think that's what we ought to do, I'll make sure that we have it set up for that purpose. It's a voice, it's voice-activated software, which has gotten a lot better in recent years.
Yeah.
So, and it learns your voice after a while, and so it doesn't make as many mistakes as they used to.
The only, the only other problem is that sometimes you say things you wish weren't recorded. So, you know, when you have a secretary taking them, those don't, sometimes don't make the minutes, but that's one of the risks.
Can you say, can you say, strike that from the record?
Exactly.
You can say it, but it doesn't get stricken. It, it.
The strike that from the record gets.
On the record forever and ever, and goes around the world on the website.
All right, okay. All right, all right, well, we should, we should look into that. The next item is the review of Selectmen's policy manual. Where do we stand on that?
Um, as I said at the last meeting, John handed in some, some suggestions. He had nine of them. And we could go, we could go through them, or I can print them out in another fashion so that you can see them easier than not having the policy in front of you. Five of them, as I recall, were pretty, just things that could be corrected. Like the addition of the, of the booklet, handbook that I had used was the wrong addition, so I had to change that. And, you know, under the email, we had a statement about phishing, which wasn't really appropriate in that section. So I just deleted the email, is one of the things he said. And then, um, vehicles, under vehicles, I added the introductory clause, in addition to highway and police vehicles, and then put our, our statement in. So some of them were pretty, you know, pretty easy to resolve and, and, and correct. The, the two things I thought that were, there were, so if that were, if that was four, and I said he had nine, so there were four or five that had some little discussion that I thought I wasn't comfortable making the decision on my own. And then there was, he had one about the consent agenda, and which brought up to me the idea of the whole agenda that is in the policy manual, we should all look at and see if that's, that's the routine we want to follow. Because it was, it was one that I took from someplace. I don't remember where at the moment, but, and I think it could be reviewed and revised. And one of the things it had was, for example, it had minutes at the end, and I think minutes should be at the beginning. But we, so we, I think we should all look at that. And the consent agenda does not have to be in the order of the minutes, from what I understand, of the, of the agenda. It's only for, it would come under other headings. So if the other heading was, you know, something that, that had an issue about consent, then we could, the chair could say, we would like consent agenda on this, and we would just, we would like a consent vote, and we would just give a consent vote. And that's usually for renewals of licenses and things for which there are, you know, several issues that are the same issue that you don't want to take each one individually because it is too, it's too redundant. So, your pleasure. We can, we can, I can type these up again, get them to you, and you can put your comments, or we can discuss it when we're back. We can put the whole thing on hold until we go back to live, if you want.
I think you mentioned.
Discussion is a little, go ahead.
You mentioned Bob had some suggestions also. He was reviewing.
I haven't reviewed Bob's because I didn't really understand where I was, what I was looking at. So I'm going to call, I'm going to contact him and say, what am I looking at? I think they were highlighted.
Yeah, I use, I use the, yeah, the tracking, tracking feature of the software. My only substantive comment was that I think some of the items at the very end should be compared with the employee manual. And maybe some of them are properly in the employee manual, whereas about two-thirds or three-fourths of the material is really properly for Selectmen, Selectmen's policy.
Okay, okay.
That's just one comment.
Okay. So if, if, if you think it's better to wait till we have a real, you know, gathering and discuss it, we can do that. If you want me to send them to you and do a consensus through that method. If you want to bring each one up individually, whatever you'd like to do, we can do.
Could you, could you?
I'm sorry, Don. I think it'd be easier to work if we all had them in front of us and roll.
It is, it really is. This is very hard to do, you know. You know, because even, even like, like a word change. If you don't see the original right in front of you, and then don't see how you want the word changed, you know, you don't really get the feel for it as well as you would if we were talking it out in a meeting. But it's, it's up to you guys.
I would prefer to do it if we all could sit down together and do it. And even if we're still, at some point, hopefully we'll get back to the six feet apart in the same room.
May 4th, maybe.
Maybe.
Unless we're not essential.
Right. Well, a lot of people think that.
Okay, so, so we'll, we'll, we'll put it in, in a, in abeyance for the moment.
All right. Okay, John.
If you want to type them up and send them for, we can review at our leisure. That's fine.
Yeah, that's cool. Next item is budget issues. I think this was just an overview by Bob. We're going to do, we're going to meet with the, we're going to have all the, the department heads on next, I think, next meeting. And then we're meeting with the advisory committee on May 11th. So I think Bob just has some information overview on that.
I think the challenge for the town, as well as every other city in town in the Commonwealth, will be with the fall, the fall-off of state revenue. The governor has made it pretty clear that revenues to the state are going off the cliff. And that will affect certainly local aid to the town. And although they deny it will affect Chapter 70 school aid, they run very short on funds. I don't see how they can not affect school aid.
And so. But Bob, if you look at, if you look at the cherry sheet, you know, typically, I think we're looking at 600,000 or 700,000. Cherry fruit represents only 5% of our income.
Right, yeah.
So I don't think the state shortfall is the effect per se. But I think what we talked about before, where the vast majority of our income comes from, you know, real estate taxes, people's ability to pay those is what's going to be affected. And I think that's where the board is looking to meet with their other departments, and how can we be lean and mean going forward? And I think that's what the board is striving for, and, you know, it's been discussed in previous meetings.
Oh, I agree.
Per se, but we need to keep our expenses down with the other departments.
And Cliff mentioned to me the last time I saw him in person that we can expect a significant fall-off in fees and local receipts. I think he's on here now. Are you on here, Cliff?
I am.
Yeah, what, any, any up to date on that?
No, it's pretty hard to tell, you know. Yeah, we're going to have a cutoff in fees, and those are substantial. Especially the interest at 14% on overdue tax. So we're going to see a hit there. I agree with John, though. I think the hit on local aid's not going to be hard. I think what will happen will, the effect that we'll see will be a reduction in our free cash. That wasn't me.
And Bob, and you're pointing out Chapter 70. You know, I know they have an insurance, but all of a sudden they cut the school thing. Who's making up the shortfall? And I think Don's been on top of that, like, okay, what's the school doing with their budget? The current budget year, and looking forward to next year.
Yeah, so my, my observation with respect to free cash is this, that it is affected by the uncollected taxes. That's one of the deductions from our overall numbers is moving taxes. So I, I think, I think we're going to be okay, but what we may not have is the level of free ca-, I guarantee it. We're not going to have the level of free cash that we've been used to. And that's what we've used to try and do some savings and at the same time, keep the tax rate at a reasonable level. It's going to be complicated. Quite frankly, I don't think we're going to have a June town meeting. I think we're going to be doing an annual and a fall at the same time, maybe in October. That's the way I see it. So we're going to be going with a 1/12 budget anyways. The advantage of that is that we can still pay our bills and still pay our employees. And other advantages that as we get towards that time, we'll have a much, much clearer view of what's going to happen. The feder-, the feds are talking about pumping money into some of the states. That will come direct to the towns, but it may travel through. So I don't think it's going to be as bad as we think. But that doesn't make sense. I don't think we're going to be as bad as some think, but it's certainly something we've got to be cautious about.
Cliff, I have a question about current year. So the excise that comes in, is that front-ended, or do you think that's going to be affected in what's our next recap, if you?
We've already collected more than I've.
Most of it, okay, all right. And then snow and ice, the deficit there wasn't bad.
Yeah, I think, I think we're owed at $9,000, which in the past it was 70, so we're ahead on that score as well.
Okay.
You know, I, I agree with Cliff. I don't think the town is, will be in as bad a condition as certainly larger communities that are far more dependent upon state aid. Cities in particular, older cities in particular. But, and, 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 you know, I think the town's going to be in reasonably good shape in that regard. We also hope to have some solar projects coming online that will augment. Of course, the timing's going to be an issue. Certainly, they'll count for fiscal '22. Not quite sure what will happen in fiscal '21.
A lot of friends in other towns, but we're not loaning money to any of your former towns, okay? If they ask, tell them no.
Yeah, have you, have you seen the new growth number?
Yes.
It's sizable.
Substantially up.
Yes.
Mary Ellen, you had a, wanted to make a comment?
Well, I think, yeah, I was. I, I think, I think rejections, you know, are all well and good and, and can be very accurate or not accurate at all. So I think that it's very hard to sit here and say what's going to happen tomorrow. I do know what's happened yesterday and for the, in the recent, in recent times. And I had proposed several weeks ago that we look for, for cuts in, in department budgets, which was, that was translated into saying that I had asked for a level tax rate. But I really was looking for cuts in local budgets because I think that, when you see that a rainy day is going to come, or may come, you prepare for it. And if you have extra money, you say, oh, that's great. But if you don't, you still have the money to cover whatever your fees are that you're going to cut. You're going to have to cover. You know, I think that when you look at the, the shortfall in, in the state and the shortfall in the federal government, who's going to pay the federal government all that money? I mean, this, this is just, it's all coming back to us taxpayers. I think, and I think also that I want to send the message that we are, we are as sincere in trying to address this as the local families are. And when they have to cut what they can buy, and they have to, you know, cut back on, on what they can do with their money, I think we should be cutting back on what we can do with our money. So I would, I would like to see, you know, us say to the departments that are coming in next week, can you tell us what it would look like to have a 5% bud-, cut in your budget? What would you cut? And how much would that be? And we would, could decide whether that's worth it or not worth it, whether it's a meaningful cut, whether it's going to handicap that department significantly, whatever. But if we don't ever look at it, and we just keep saying we're going to do what we did last year, and, you know, I just don't think that that's the way to go fiscally. Because I know that you wouldn't do that in your household.
If, if I may? That, I, I don't disagree with that, but you have to realize that the Selectmen control the major part of the budget, and a lot of the major part of the budget is negotiated salaries.
Right, right? But I mean, if, if, if push comes, if push comes to shove, negotiated salaries have to be, have to be discussed. You know, I'm not saying we're there yet. I don't think we're there yet, okay? But I do think that we are in a serious situation. And I do think there are a lot of people that aren't going to get jobs again. You know, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's, it's all is, is optimi-, I'm not as optimistic as some of you are about the fiscal situation. And I think we should prepare in case. That's my issue.
Well, if I may, if I may, one more time? I'm not, certainly not disagreeing with you, Mary Ellen. What I'm saying is, is that it's May. I don't think we're going to be looking at hard numbers until August or September. Because I got a feeling we're still not going to be a town meeting until the, the fall.
I would agree with you on that. I, I think that that's probably true. And, and, but I, I still think that you say, you say to people, look at it and tell me what you think you might do so that we can talk more intelligently and have a more firm grasp of what these cuts would mean to us. If, if, if it came that we had to cut 5%, what would that mean to us? Or if they say you have to cut 10%, what would that mean to us? And if we don't have that discussion, then we discuss it in, in November, and we make a last-minute decision, or October, September, whatever. But I agree with you. I agree with you that I think that, that we would have more information to, to make a final decision. I just think the information should be shared.
Moderator was talking this afternoon about having some kind of skeletal town meeting at the end of June or mid-June, where we would, and you, you're going to review the warrant, which has not yet been issued tonight. And so it might be possible to have three or four articles, essential articles, and operate through the summer and get into the fall with, with the balance of the articles at that time.
Well, the longer we go, the clearer the picture cuts.
Bob, back, back to the budget. You got, you had a conversation with the superintendent of schools relative to their-
Yes.
My, my question's been, are we saving any money on transportation? I mean, I, I understand it goes into their E and D account and all that stuff. But there has to be some savings there. There's no school sports. There's no transportation. There's no, you know. And, and I, I see it as a help to their budget. So have you got any more information on that?
I had two conversations with the superintendent, one last week, one this morning. And he said he would get back to me regarding transportation, but he was in some kind of discussions with the Educational Collaborative, and that there might be some news on that, but I don't have it yet. With regard to the other, the school sports, he said they're going to rebate the fees that the students pay for school sports. There might be some savings with regard to coaching fees and so forth. And then we discussed, you know, the standard approach whereby any savings below 5% are retained by the schools. Anything over that has to be rebated to the members of the regional. So if the, if the, what we know for certain is that if at the end of the year, the school system has significant savings above 5%, that they will, they'll be rebating those as assessments. I'm getting really a lot of interference here. They'll be rebating to the, the two towns if in fact their savings exceed the 5% rule. I expect to hear from them. He told me today that he would get back to me as, hopefully by the end of the day, which didn't happen today, but as soon as he gets the information from the Educational Collaborative about it, about the transportation issue.
Okay. All right, thank you. Next item is just a review of the warrant article review.
One, hopefully you all, I looked over the thing. I suggested to the board that we take off the highway truck warrant and push it to the fall. I did talk to Mark today, and he's, he's fine with that. Could even, could even go to next spring. You know, with some careful monitoring of the equipment. So I think this is in line with what you talked about, Don. We pretty much prepare a minimal warrant, no real expenditure. You know, and last clip said reassess in the fall and see what we can.
Want to make a motion that affect?
No, we haven't closed the warrant yet. I mean, so it, it doesn't need a motion.
Okay.
You're saying, you're saying, you're saying the highway truck. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
The highway truck?
Yeah.
That's one of the small trucks. I think it's that Bob 48, 49, something like that, one of the Fords.
And was, was that the one that you said at another meeting that they just really needed the snowplow for, or was that's another truck?
No, that's one of the larger dump trucks where they were getting a new sander out of snow and ice.
Okay.
Yeah, I was over at the highway department, and I saw the old sander. It is in very poor condition.
Right.
So that, that, that'd be Article 14, Mary Ellen.
Right, yep. I just noted it.
Okay. And the other, the other articles are pretty much standard stuff. Town reports, the budget, prior year bills, spending limits and the revolving funds, the enterprise fund, you have to put a number in there, but that, that's no, that's a wash. There's nothing, tax levy there. Community preservation, we haven't heard from them.
But again, again, doesn't impact-
Foundation fund, that's a thousand.
It doesn't what?
Doesn't impact the budget per se. It's just-
Doesn't impact the budget.
PPA towards projects. I do have a report, though, on the, the project from last year, the fracking at the, at the park. And that apparently didn't work, so it looks like they will not be coming back for well work in the spring. So that's good.
Not coming back?
No, the fracking did the, increased the flow enough where the, the spray park is performing well, or will be performing.
All right.
It will be fine.
Conservation funds, a thousand dollars usually, right, and except highway aid. Deleting, deleting the solar moratorium language, library additional state aid, and the two assessor, traditional assessor items, school resource officer, the truck replacement will probably put off stormwater bylaw amendments. I don't know if they'll have those ready. Reserve fund, it's probably, it's a pretty lean warrant as it is now.
I don't have any recent amendments for the stormwater bylaw. I know they're working on them.
All right, and I guess the, the next item is the outstanding minutes. I think we talked about that a little bit. And the, the ones I had were January 21st to 27th, 218, 224, 323, which we did. So I guess that's just a matter of posting those.
Right. I think, I thought last meeting we approved, was it March 9th or something like that, Don?
9th, 9th.
I'm online, basically, yeah.
But this is the end of April.
This next the next list of items, I asked Bob to put on. I thought this would be a good meeting to just do some housekeeping and catching up so that, you know, if anyone who's listening in or when they get the minutes knows what's going on. These are items that have the people have been working on, so.
I, I just put it up on the screen.
That's great.
Isn't that clever? All right. So hold on a minute. Let me get my- Well, please, so the first thing is, you wanna go through it, Bob? Police radio?
Okay. They're continuing to make progress. All FCC licenses have been filed, and we are still waiting for approval. There's an indication that the timeline because of COVID-19 is, is going to be much slower, which will impact installation. As soon as the licensing is received, the installation will take place. Marcus has been in contact with the Selectmen's Office to obtain information on cell tower owners to facilitate installations. All equipment has been ordered, and we've begun to receive it. I think you got a message from the fire chief also, that he has received equipment as well, and so.
Along with, along with the police, relative to dispatch that we discussed last week, I have talked to the Ludlow. And he is interested in discussing dispatch with Handen. So I would refer that to this, to this chair.
Ludlow.
Ludlow.
Okay. Ludlow, all right.
Here's the solar report from the assessors department.
All right.
Solar, we have solar. You want me to read them?
No, you can read it.
Yeah, well, the, the solar is, is really spread across the, a couple of departments here, so you might want to include the- let's start with the assessors department first.
Okay. Well, we have 296 Ames Road, Blue Wave Project. The developer, Matt Parlin, has been advised that additional information is needed. We have a lot of background noise here. Let me see what I can do with that. Okay, it stopped. And so he's been advised that he needs to submit a revised pilot draft with personal property only. They're gonna review and hope to provide the requested information soon. 220 Mill Road, followed up with solar developer Kurt Maryland. As we have not seen a pilot draft yet, he responded and indicated that it would be a few more months before we see a pilot draft from them, Altus, that is. Thresher Road, have not heard anything since they were going back. Planning board with increased site production. And the rear of Summers Road, the Borrego Solar Project, certified at Butter's request, has been submitted to our office, that is to say, the assessors' office, for upcoming planning board meeting. We also have, from the building inspector, some information on these projects as well, since he's involved. I'm skipping down there. Building permit and stormwater permits are in place for the Ames Road project. Driveway access is on the Wilbraham portion, and watched by the town of Wilbraham's engineer. I'm gonna have to mute everybody.
Mute everybody.
I'm gonna do that, yes. Okay. Surely I haven't solved the problem. So we finished with Ames Road. Mill Road, Altus Energy Project, building permit, stormwater permits are in place. Driveway permit is also in place. Facility has racking and panels and some fencing erected. They're working on the electrical portion of the project. Stormwater inspections have occurred weekly with no issues. Thresher Road, Clean Energy Collaborative, driveway permit has been issued. Clean Energy wanted to use a different style of racking system, and were sent back to the planning board for approval. Cross Road, Amoresco, no activity in the, in the building department. As you know, with Amoresco, we have, we have issued the land lease, signed the land lease. And today I did call those two companies that were suggested by the Selectmen to combine parcels 85, 86, and 87. I did get a call back from one company. I haven't heard from Smith Associates yet. I'm sure there's some kind of skeletal maintenance of their offices going on. I would expect a call back tomorrow. Are asked to submit proposals, and we'll bring those to the Selectmen probably next week. Senior Center Project, Becky is on this call. Expansion project that's currently out to bid under the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Friends of Handen Seniors voted to add $10,000 to the already secured $15,000 from the state earmark grant, increasing the total to $25,000. Becky said she has not heard back from PVPC with regard to any bids that were received. She will keep the Selectmen apprised.
Relative to the various projects that we have going on, the Senior Center, the highway department, the fire department, the sidewalk in the, in the center of town or whatever, you know, is gonna go for the, for, at Allen Street there. Can those be put on hold ever, or once we've started this process, does it have to go right through to fruition? I mean, what I'm thinking is, I'm not thinking that we would do this now, but I'm thinking that after the, after the bids come in, can we then say, well, we wanna put this off for a year? Or are we tied to a timeline that has already been established?
Typically, the, the vendors would say the bid is good for a certain amount of time.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're obligated, I don't think we're obligated to spend the money. I know that money- the highway building was already in this year's appropriation.
Right.
That has already been raised and encumbered, if you will, in the budget. Money for other things have not been raised, not on the tax rate at this point.
Okay, and the ones that have been raised and encumbered, you have to go back to town meeting to say, we wanna put it off, or you cannot put it off at all?
They could not be released for any other purpose. That is, we raised-
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
So we're up to the highway department, and the highway department expansion project. Mark has received completed plans from Larry Tuttle at Architectural Insights. And they've been distributed, as you know, to the Selectmen and Town Administrator for review. Once, once we're able to get together to review them, he'll go back to Larry with any corrections, and a final package will be generated, which we will then advertise. This could happen within the next week or two. I guess the question would be, should we put this on the agenda session with Mark to discuss those plans in the next week or two? Don can answer that at some point, yeah.
Yeah.
They don't seem to have any particular problems at this point. We need to include a clause addressing the starting date, certainly, considering the circumstances that they have right now. Either way, the funding for the project may have to be encumbered in fiscal '21. Right now, Larry is waiting on us to review and return plans.
Bob, the funds are all set. They, remember Dick, Dick put them, so they don't need to be encumbered, because as a warrant article, they don't expire at the end of a fiscal year.
Correct. And we've discussed the dump truck already. We've discussed the building department. We've discussed the health nurse. The cupola.
What? I just wanted to say one thing about the health nurse. I do know of arrangements where, and this is not that we're doing this, but this is just for sharing, where a volunteer nurse has been used in town, and the hospital that the town has an association with underwrites the insurance for that nurse. Okay, it's like, it's like one of the reach out programs that they have, you know, to try to make partnerships with communities. So that would be something to, I know that they do it in Springfield. Mercy Hospital does it with several, several places in Springfield. Because the issue that the volunteer nurses have, obviously, is their insurance. You know, if I give the wrong thing, that's the insurance I wanna have, and that's what the insurance is that they give them. So I just thought I'd share that, so you know it.
Okay, Paul McNauton is going to do the cupola project, but he needs some dry weather. He needs three or four days, because obviously, when the cupola comes down, it's gonna take some time to patch the roof so we don't have a leak, should it rain. So we're just waiting for better weather. And it's not predicted for a while either, so. We get four seasons in New England sooner or later. We had spring in February. Now we're having February and April. COVID grant money. You're aware that this funds are coming in. We're gonna look to provide payments for Lori Jane and a public health nurse for the extra work from COVID, on COVID, complaint calls, inspections, positive tests, and so forth. Also FEMA is preparing- Also FEMA is preparing to make a distribution for communities. That during the emergency have spent extra funds. For COVID nineteen. I was on that call last week. It lasted a very long time. The same call is going to be presented, same information is going to be presented on a call. On April thirtieth, if anyone wants to listen in. It's it's well worthwhile. Many malls are waiting for the arrival of the tank for installation.
I would just, I would add on that is that the. They have been very diligent in adhering to the timeline that we set for the report to us, so they are making some progress.
And the interim fire chief reports two projects at the fire department. First one is the new fire and police radio system. Mobile radios in the apparatus have been installed. New portable handheld radios have been delivered. We saw minor programming to be done on all the radios. And possibly after the infrastructure is installed on the cell towers. feasibility study, which we certainly asked about. Mitchell Associates has been to the fire station twice for a walkthrough. Chief has been involved in three Zoom meetings lasting three hours each. During the meetings, we were going over the forty-page program document. That had been previously filled out and sent to them. anticipate several more hours with Zoom meetings to finish the program document. Chief is looking forward to a site survey. Add to add underground utilities to the site survey. Contacted Gary Weiner, and this may be done at no cost to the town. I think those are all the items with some exceptions that you've asked about. I know that you're. And we are all interested in ramping up the HR project. I've been in discussions. With the Department of Revenue as well as the Collins Institute. And we will shortly put in an application for funding. For the Collins Institute to complete the compensation, classification, and job description. Part of the project that isn't done yet. And that would be funded by the state. And also they would fund. The installation of ClearGov. And I'm confident that, you know, that that's going to happen. Collins has done a lot of that work. They have a lot of credibility with the DOR. And I think we can get the work completed without any local funds.
Where are we standing on the annual report?
Is Pam on still? Pam was was on the line. Everything has, Pam, I'm unmuting you. Hello? Pam? As far as I know, there were just one or two that were missing. I have written the town administrator annual report. I believe the selectmen's part of that is ready to go. I think. There might be one other department still outstanding.
The sidewalk grant?
The sidewalk grant. I signed after you approved. The project, sent it back. And found out that tie and bond does not have a signed copy. There cannot be any explanation for that because I know that it was done and sent in. I've thought about it for a couple of days. The only I could think of is that maybe the email address that was used because we sent an electronic copy. Wasn't somehow correct and they didn't receive it. Anyway, a signed copy has been given to them and they will begin doing the design projects and.
And that that's the money from the state that the state gave, so there's no cost.
No, twenty-five thousand dollars grant from the state for the design. Tie and bond is adhering to their original bid, which goes back quite some time of twenty-one thousand and change.
And Cumberland Farms.
And this is a sidewalk from where to where about? That they're doing?
Be a sidewalk along Allen Street. Down to.
From the senior center up to the.
Yeah, I mean, in the past, when we discussed this. I think there were, I was hearing doubts from the selectmen that this project should be done. We did ask the Department of Revenue if we could reprogram the money to do sidewalks around the town hall. They refused. They said that we issued the grant for the purpose. That was described in the grant, and that's all you can use the money for. Otherwise, you have to return the funds. So selectmen voted to go forward with the design. We'll have it whether or not. The project will be built, perhaps, you know, it might be something that would be part of the tip project. If if we were able to make that happen.
Cumberland Farms, any update?
No news. I did talk with Jane about that. Any update, Jane? I'll unmute you. No?
I can make it easy, no.
A woman of few words.
No, I mean, they'd have to come to one of our departments to do whatever it is they're doing, and to my knowledge, they haven't come to any department. I don't, conservation Ted, I don't know.
Is there a new owner?
I don't know if it's gone through or not. Oh, Ted shaking his head, yes.
Because the building, I guess my point is the building is in the same. When we originally had the building inspector send him a letter saying that they had to close up the roof and all that stuff, so I don't know if that happened, you know.
I don't think so, though. I don't think they've done anything really, but I don't know. I'm not in the building department.
Yeah, yeah.
Ted is on here too.
Yeah, the only thing the conservation has been involved with is the. Removal of the front contaminated soil. Has nothing to do with the building, has nothing to do with the sale. It's just the removal of the front contaminated soil and replacement with clean soil. So that a future project involving the whole plot of land and the building could go forward.
All right, thanks Ted.
Say something.
Go ahead, Jane.
She's muted.
Bob?
Yep. You're unmuted.
Okay, Lori McCool, the four five four five one five five number.
Yes.
Unmute that one. Lori has information. Okay, Lori?
Yeah, I was on the impression that that the impression that Jeff bought it, the the same guy that owns the. The Plaza. I think I was almost, I'm almost positive that 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 sale went through.
All right.
Yeah, I think it is a sold property.
Try have tree removal on here too. I just was wondering if we had removed anymore or where we stand on that.
The tree warden has spent all the funds, a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars that. The town meeting has provided. There's much more work to be done, as you know, it's about half done. In the budgets that you have access to. There was some discussion or even dispute about whether or not the tree warden should pay for police details. Or whether it should come out of the police budget. That's unresolved. But he has resubmitted his budget to include twenty-nine thousand dollars. In anticipated police details for the coming fiscal year.
And I think and I think the advisory committee is looking at, they want to have, like we did this special town meeting. A warrant article for that extra money. You know, the extra hundred thousand dollars rather than make it an part of his operational budget. That may be something we need to consider.
Also, I did get a message recently from Senator Lesser's aide. Asking if the town is interested. In putting in any earmarks. So that right away, I'm not, I have my doubts that we're going to see any earmarks this year. But they were going through with the process. And so. I thought I'd bring it up with the selectmen that. If you wanted to just propose an earmark, certainly more tree removal, more hazardous tree work. I think would make some sense. Not expecting that we're going to get much approved.
Well, I mean, clearly that'd be a perfect thing to do, you know.
I would agree.
And even if it's. Even if it's, you know, twenty or fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, oh, yeah, every little bit counts. But we're in the range of a couple hundred thousand dollars of more funding that's needed. In order to take care of the dead and hazardous trees along the public way.
Sarah just texted something.
Only earmarks are for wearing masks.
I didn't see the last part of it.
But we can't buy them.
All right. And then town meeting logistics. The town moderator and the town clerk are kind of working on what other towns are doing, if they could have a town meeting, can't have a town meeting, how you would handle it with social distancing. Rick has done, Rick Green and Eva both done some work on that, and they're kind of following up and that, so I just that that's on the agenda. And the Memorial Day activities. We had a bad connection the last time. I think we need to get Heath back on here to get a better explanation of what he wants to do, what he's thinking about, so. Anything else? Excuse me, Mary Ellen, I just want to say again that I I wanted to run down this list because I think it's important. That we keep track of it, but now that 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 are, you know, the residents of town know that despite the town hall being closed. And despite the the difficulty in meeting on Zoom and that, that that things are being done and is progressing and that. People in town are working every day, particularly our police and first responders who are, you know, out there on the front line. So I think it's important that people know that they were that were moving along.
And not just that, I think, excuse me, Mary Ellen, not just that, the senior center people are working from home remotely. You have Eva, you have Wendell, you have Jane, the people who both go to town hall to get paperwork and then work from their home as well. So really, kudos to everybody, fire, police, highway as well, they're out there working as well. These people are dedicated to working for all of us.
And also if residents want to know.
This is Lori.
Yeah, Lori, okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing, and I don't think I mentioned it at the last meeting, was that. Because the town hall has been pretty much vacant all this time. Before we send people back in and have them work there, we should check out the water quality. Because when when there's water sitting in the pipes for that long, I had gotten an email a while back regarding that. For any kind of public or private buildings, but not only our town, our town buildings that have not had any consistent use. As well as people that own some private property where their businesses have been vacant. That we have to make sure that we check on the quality of the water before we have employees go back in and start drinking, using the water. So just flush it out or whatever we have with our water suppliers. I just wanted to bring that up.
Great, thanks Lori.
We have our water operator. Would he be able to go in and do that for us?
And I know that that Wilbraham's aware of it as far as like the schools and all of that, that. Those will be fine once we get back to the, because the schools will be vacant for quite a while before the kids come back in the fall. So that'll all get handled, but as we start opening up. And especially as employees might be coming into the town hall, we just should have given that precaution.
Well, that that feeds into Eva's note that she sent to us this afternoon, asking if we had, if the selectmen had given much thought. To how we're going to reopen that building when it comes to be, how we're going to do spacing, are we going to have, you know. Sneeze guards or shields up. And she said she was willing to share from, you know, her perspective if we wanted her to do that. And later Jane's Jane's looking like she's going to say something. Are you going to say something, Jane? Unmute Jane, please. Nope.
Unleash Jane.
Sorry, guys, but masks, is the town going to supply masks, excuse me, for all the employees? And if so, you know, we have to think about that as well. We have to start. Doing whatever we need to do to get them or. You know, I think it's something we have to start thinking about as well.
And for the second part of her request, as you know, the town was paying somebody to dispose of this equipment. And if she's willing to take it home and basically we're not. Go for it.
No, no, me, no, Eva, I think that was Eva's.
I'm not disposing of you.
At this point, you know. I don't know. I did want to report, we have one more case of COVID in the town, so we're up to fourteen. Still holding our own, though. I think it's something to be very proud of that.
And I think this is something, I asked Jane this question today, and I think people need to understand. The total number of cases reported is not necessarily active cases, right, Jane? You could have somebody, just like we know Bill, that was a case and came off the list. But we're never going to know the active number because that's not what they tell us.
Right, it's the number from start to finish. What we started with and we just keep tallying up how many total we've had.
And then the other thing, the other thing too, to remember is that there are a lot of cases that are that are confirmed clinically. And not through testing. So there are a lot more cases that are not showing up on the Maven. That we don't know about because if they're just going to the doctor and the doctor's saying, okay, it sounds like you have it, just stay home for the next two weeks. So keep that in mind as well.
So something else to put on our agenda.
Yes, also, we wanted to mention that for residents who are interested in which services continue during this crisis. That selectmen asked me to put on the website a paragraph from each department as to what services they continue to offer during this period. So it's there.
Do we have a town administrators report?
We do.
Wasn't that pretty much, wasn't that pretty much everything you just went over?
Pretty much, yes, it was, I think I did go over everything here. I mentioned the HR project with the Collins Institute and ClearGov. I have asked for contracts from McNamara Halling and from Action Ambulance. For implementation, implementation on the first of July. On May fourth, we're going to begin reviewing resumes for the position of permanent fire chief.
And how are we going to do that? Do we have, we decided how we're going to do that? Are we going to do a Zoom meeting, or are we, they're going to be in a central place, we each come in individually, review them, or what are we doing?
I can get you the resumes. As you know, we're now down to four. You may, I don't know, I guess it'd be the preference of the board, you can do it privately at home. And come in with recommendations for those. That you'd like to see interviewed. Or we could do it at a meeting. We'd have to be a little careful, and if necessary, might have to do a separate Zoom meeting as an executive session. It's the preference of the board, you know. The board, you know?
If the board is going to serve as a screening committee, you can do it in the executive session. But if the board is serving as the selection committee, then you have to do it in public session. So that's, that's a fine line that we have to be careful of. I would think that we could review them individually and just get the ones that we think should be interviewed to you. The names would be an easy way to do it, but I'm open to anything. The other thing I was wondering is, if we're interviewing, if we're doing the resumes on May 4th, can we hold off till June to do the interview so hopefully we will be six feet apart and the person would be able to come in in person? Because it's, it's easier to get a dialogue going with a person that's sitting with you than it is doing it on a Zoom in a Zoom media, it seems to me. I would like to hold off to interview until June if we could, but but we may find out May 4th that we're going to go back to six feet anyways, I suppose.
Yeah. Tentatively, June 1st, if the schedule holds at this point, will be the night of the advisory would have their review of the town meeting warrant.
Yeah, we can do it anytime, anytime.
June 8th might be better because it'd be in between.
Yeah.
Yeah.
June 8th, want to set June 8th as a target for?
Hopefully face to face, you know?
For face to face interviews, if we can, if we can do it.
All right.
You'll send us the resumes and we'll send you back the names, right?
Send you the resumes.
And do you have it, and you want that by any particular date or you'll just tell us when we get them?
No.
Does it matter? I don't think it matters.
No, I don't think it does.
Okay, thank you.
I did mention the tip project, that that's going to be presented on the 18th. I'm expecting a response from the school superintendent on those remaining questions that were presented to me by Don. Have contacted Smith Associates and Sherman and Frederick. We should have, next week, I think we should probably have proposals from them. And that is the report. We have a meeting on May 4th. We have a meeting of department heads and staff on May 6th. And of course, the annual town meeting on the 15th of June and the town election on the 22nd.
Now, Bob, on May 11th, we're meeting with the advisory committee?
Yes.
So.
That was the agreement.
Are we going to, they're going to Zoom our meeting or are we going to Zoom their meeting?
I thought I would set up the meeting. I'm not sure what software they have, you know, there's two versions of Zoom. The free version allows you to have only five participants in the meeting. And there's the pro version, which I have, which allows not only more than five, but also allows meetings that go beyond 40 minutes. So I think I should probably set it up.
Right, right.
And invite, and invite them, so.
Okay.
Bit of a danger, bit of a danger. The pro version caps at 100 people, so gosh.
Well, we got the 51 last week, so.
Is there anything else to come before the board?
I'm good.
Mary Ellen?
Fine.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
The move.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everyone.
I'll be safe.